This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Education Meeting for January 5th, 2021. And again, welcome to the new year. And we all have high hopes for a much better year in 2021. So thank you for joining us this evening. Please take note that the Board of Education of the Brighton Central School District, in response to the continuing emergency circumstances caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, inconsistent with the New York State Governor's executive orders, shall conduct its scheduled public meeting for this evening here at 7:00 PM to be held via Zoom and streamed via Zoom webinar through our district webpage. In a moment, we will offer the opportunity for public participation. If there are any members of the public on with us this evening that wish to address the board, you're welcome to ask a question, make a comment. Please use the chat feature at the bottom of your screen. Click on the chat feature, put your name and address in, please, and we will call upon you in just a moment. In addition to the ability to speak this evening, members of the public are always welcome to contact the board directly or directly contact Dr. McGowan either via email, telephone, or postal mail. All of our contact information is listed on the district webpage. And also, you can send any information that you wish directly to our board clerk, Kim Lanza-Fame, for any one of us or all of us as a collective unit. And her information is also on the website. So again, if there are members of the public with us this evening who wish to make a comment at this point in time, we offer that comment at every one of our meetings. We ask you to please use the chat feature, sign in with your name and address, and we will call on you. And I don't know if we have anybody yet. Dr. McGowan, it wasn't wasn't a long period of time to allow people to sign in this evening, but...
Nope, nobody has indicated a desire to participate in the public participation.
Well, then, as a reminder, we have all those other ways that folks can contact us also, so please do. As we move to approve the agenda this evening, I do make note, Kim, that we are six board members this evening. Board member Karen Hitch is not here with us this evening. May we have a motion board, please, for approval of our agenda?
So moved?
Back in.
Moved by Sue and seconded by Christina. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's six in favor and none opposed. Motion, please, for approval of minutes from our December 15th, 2020 business meeting?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Larry, seconded by Andrea. Anyone have any corrections, deletions, additions to those minutes for Kim? Is it all in favor?
Hold on one second. I'm sorry. Just on the location of our meeting, it says that we were at the 12 Corners Elementary School building. Do you see that?
Yeah, we, you know, that's a good point, and it's something that, let's just make note of it. We can talk about it. Technically, we've been listing that as board location, I think, along with the verbiage around Zoom webinar meetings.
I don't know why it stuck out to me tonight, Mark.
Yeah, let's just double check to make sure we've got, I mean, we have all the notices in correctly in our agendas.
Correct.
You know, that, I mean, technically, we're streaming it through the district system, but yeah, we should...
We're coming to Aliah from 12 Corners, if that's at all helpful. It's quiet, though.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Great point. But yeah, that's a good point. We've never really thought about that since we went to pandemic meeting that way, but technically, you're right, we should look at that. All right, then, with that note, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That's six in favor and none opposed. The first order of business this evening will continue our Brighton Believers Award recognition that we've been, I think this is the third or fourth month, so Dr. McGowan, I'll turn it over to you to start, please.
Thanks so much, Mark. I really appreciate that, and we are very excited to continue this process of recognizing some really wonderful people in our community. Last school year, as we've mentioned before, the Brighton Believes Council selected 22 nominees to receive a Brighton Believers Award at its meeting in February. However, they couldn't be presented, of course, due to COVID, shutting schools down in March. We didn't forget about those members of our school community and wanted to make sure they were recognized for demonstrating the Brighton Believes' character traits: integrity, respect, responsibility, kindness, and self-control. These award winners are parents, students, teachers, staff members, and community members, and several are joining us this evening to be recognized as we continue this process. The first up for us this year is Lisa Martin, or tonight is Lisa Martin. Lisa's a parent and volunteer. She was nominated by Joy Pensari. Joy wrote that Lisa is an example of Brighton Believes with her responsibility and service to her community. Lisa has served as basketball team treasurer and serves Sleep Heavenly Sleep, an organization donating bunk beds to children, Foodlink, and other volunteer organizations. Joy also wrote, "When I first met Lisa, I was impressed with her willingness to promote service within our community. She helped foster opportunities to connect Brighton Service Day back to the community, including having students help with a local garden project in Rochester." So for that, we recognize Lisa with a Brighton Believers Award this evening. Please join me in giving Lisa a round of applause, please. Great job, Lisa. Second up from the district is Lynn Starpoli-Boucher, a community member nominated by Amy Sinis Connors. Amy wrote, "Lynn has done a tremendous service bringing yoga to Brighton residents. She created and has filled a much-needed resource in the Brighton Rec Department where she offers weekly classes. She also regularly works with Brighton High School teams and yoga team building and community building workshops and classes. Lynn was the founder of the Rochester Yoga Service Network, dedicated to bringing yoga to underserved population. She works regularly with teen empowerment in Rochester and continues to lead yoga revolution for college students at Nazareth College. In addition to her local efforts in the town, Lynn serves as president of the National Yoga Service Council. Lynn has been a longtime Brighton resident. She's also a Brighton parent of two wonderful graduates that many of us knew very well, director of the Center for Spirituality at Nazareth College, and an all-around good person. She exemplifies the qualities of Brighton Believes." Please join me in congratulating Lynn Boucher. Great job, Lynn. And now, it's my pleasure to introduce Matt Tappin.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. I am so honored and grateful to be able to be here to present Ms. Mary Fiola. Wave, Mary. I see her. Mary is a teaching assistant at Council Rock Primary School, and she was nominated by teacher Judy Wegman. Judy wrote, "Mary has smiled, sung, hugged, and knitted her way into the hearts of countless children and adults at Council Rock. Describing Mary as a teaching assistant does not do justice for all that she provides children at Council Rock, what she has provided for them over the last 10 years. A kind, gentle light guides her every move. Our children are so lucky to have Mary as part of their day. Mary pays attention to details, and she often asks a child about something they shared with her the day or even the week before. Mary loves lunch duty. She, we just talked about it today, she runs to lunch duty. Other people run away from it. Mary loves lunch duty, and it gives her an opportunity to connect with children in an informal way. Kindness, gentleness, meeting a child where they are is Mary's specialty. I once asked a child who struggled with social-emotional issues who his best friend was at school, and without skipping a beat, the child announced, 'Mrs. Fiola!' Mary Fiola is truly a rare treasure. Brighton is so lucky to have you, Mary. Continue to give your sprinkles. Mary gives kindness sprinkles to everyone based on Arnie the Donut, and she loves to give out sprinkles and little pieces of candy. Mary, we are so lucky to have you, and let's give a big round of applause for Mary." It is now my honor to introduce Dr. Allison Rio, who is going to talk about our next valuable member.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. And I am so fortunate to be here tonight to chat about our fifth-grade teacher, Ms. Lonnie Mazurowski. So Lonnie, just give a quick wave so everyone can see you. Lonnie was nominated by our, one of our counselors at French Road, Ms. Ashley Ellis. And Mrs. Ellis wrote when nominating Lonnie, "When you think of someone who can captivate others by just their presence, and when you think of someone who just pours love, acceptance, and community, and when you think of someone who wakes up knowing they are living their purpose, you think of Lonnie Mazurowski. Whether you experience her in person or just spend some time in her sweet space, you feel the magic. Ms. Maz provides every child with permission to feel safe in their own skin and to feel a level of acceptance and belonging that everyone seeks to have. She's the teacher you will always remember, the friend you hope to have, and the person that will leave a legacy for lifetimes to come." Congratulations, Lonnie. I'm so lucky to work with you and everyone at French Road as well. And next up is Dr. Tom Ho.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to welcome Katie Massey. She is our next recipient tonight of the Brighton Believes Award, and I know there are a ton of counselors and administrators out there supporting Katie tonight. Katie is the coordinator of our Brighton Support Center at the high school, and I nominated Katie back in the winter, so congratulations, Katie. Katie goes above and beyond the call of duty. She puts on, she puts in countless hours at night and on the weekends communicating with parents, teachers, and students about how to best support students and their unique needs. She advocates in the support center for students, provides them with resources, supplies, and many times food, and many times coming out of her own pocket to help them be successful, and she truly loves what she does. She's the epitome of kindness and respect for everyone. She loves kids and strives to make each and every student feel good about themselves. She lives Brighton believes and is one of the most organized people that I know, and we are certainly grateful for her and all that she does at the high school. So Katie, well deserved, and all of our other recipients tonight, congratulations to you. But Katie?
I would just thank you for those, but to Lonnie, to Lynn, to Lisa, to Katie, to Mary, you are what makes us who we are. And I know many of you in a lot of different ways and different experiences. You've touched my children's lives, my family's lives in many ways. So I say on behalf of all parents, all kids, and the district, you're what make us a special place. You're what make people believe in Brighton, the way you approach your life, your work, and what you contribute to this community. You're why 12 years ago, we wanted to move here and be a part of this place, the types of things you do. So thank you so much, all of you. Great, great work. We appreciate it. One more round of applause, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGowan, and on behalf of the board, to the five of you this evening, but also to those that took the time to nominate you. I think, you know, it's unfortunate, certainly, so many things about COVID and the fact that we couldn't have this all together last year in person, have the group all together in one place. But really, there's been a nice benefit to that of bringing a little sunshine into a list of our meetings right now that we really needed. And I think hearing the stories about the five of you and who you are as individuals and the difference that you make every day with kids and families is really, really a benefit. And we look forward to you continuing your work. And again, thanks for those that took the time to recognize you also. So our congratulations also, and a reminder to everyone that we have one more in our, one more session, if you will, of recognition at our January 19th meeting. I believe will be the final session to recognize the entire group of that class. So thank you again, and thank you for joining us this evening. Next up this evening, speaking of sunshine at a time we really need it, is our principal reports this evening. So we're looking forward to that, and we'll start out, as we do, we've been maintaining the traditional order this year, so no reason to upset that at the moment. So we'll start with Matt Tappin, and talk to us about Council Rock, Matt.
Hi, everybody. Dr. McGowan, do I have permission to share?
You always have permission to share. Yes, absolutely.
All right. So, Council Rock, so late in December, we, our last two days, so it was a little bit different than normal because we have the two hybrid groups. We had our stay-in our PJs and read days. Again, just such a great day. It's now day, two days. What could be better than I getting, me getting to wear PJs for two days in a row to kind of move into our holiday vacation? You can see, we've got a couple of animated shots of Dr. Gasparino in a couple of different classrooms. So thank you to all the volunteers who were able to make it. Again, just a great tradition that we have that kind of allows us to calmly celebrate reading as we move into the holiday break. Sue Biato's class, her first-grade class, the hybrid class, did this incredible project with graphic design students from RIT. Each of our students at Brighton were hooked up with a student, and they did a couple of Zooms and were able to chat with the adult or the students. And the students from RIT created an animated version of the students' writing. So the students, students described their characters, they described what was going to happen, and then they put together a cartoon, and then they had a get-together again via Zoom where they shared those, and the kids got to see their projects come to life. And I included a link. I'm not going to play it here, but you absolutely can click on that. It talks a little bit more about the project, and then also has some of the final products that they did. It was just a really great, again, you know, Mr. Kaganovich, you said, you know, we've found ways to do things differently, and I just continually am amazed at the way our teachers and our students are continuing to connect and do these incredible projects. We've always had great partnerships with some of, you know, the outside colleges, but allowing that to continue. So kudos to Sue and her class, and then to the RIT folks. And Ashley Youngman's class, this is featured on our website, actually, and this is a link to it as well. If I were president, this coincided with our presidential election. And in one of my favorite things, Mrs. Youngman really, I think, gets into the role of Secret Service. So she stands next to them and is in her sunglasses and all black guarding the president. But I think this might have been Theodore Roosevelt. Dr. McGowan was with me as we walked through, and he was giving his speech, if he were president, what he would do, and some of the things the students all worked on it. Thanks to Eric Gruner, who came, you can see in front of the green screen. He taped all of those speeches, and they are on our website if you want to get a little sampling of those. Robin Ackerman, she's one of our second-grade remote teachers, so this is a fully remote class. She did the read aloud, "The Silver Arrow" by Love Grossman, and the kids were super into the book. And she just took it upon herself to write him an email. She found his address and said how much her second graders enjoyed the book. And he wrote back and said, "Well, could I come for a visit?" And she said, "Come for a visit." So they did a Zoom visit. This is a picture, whoops, this is a picture of that Zoom visit. I was able to log on. He was so gracious. He spent about 45 minutes with them. They talked about what they loved about the book. They talked about what they think should happen next in if he wrote another book. He took ideas from them and has said that some of their ideas may even make it into his next book. So again, just another amazing way, you know, we thought, "Oh, we can't have author visits this year." Well, we're finding ways to get those specialists in and working with our kids even in this land. So I'm not sure if Mr. Board Member Davis has, you know, let you know, but there is some construction going on at Council Rock. So we had a pretty huge kind of milestone happen. So this is the center hallway that's been closed since September. We had an entire wing that was closed in September. And this right here is the hallway that leads down, straight down past where you're standing, where the old, the old main office is to your right, and the new main entrance is to your left. This hallway's been closed. It was reopened just before the holiday break. I had seven incredible teachers who had to move out of their classrooms and into the newly renovated hall, which was a huge undertaking. I want to thank all of them for their flexibility, the incredible work that they did, and also to John Novelli and his crew, who just were, you know, incredible in helping them make the move. But we have new kids bathrooms that are going to be open. Our E&amp;L class moved. Our music class moved. This blank space right here is our new staff lounge that now has furniture in it, thanks to Maria Vanat, who helped me pick that out and get it there for our staff. We can't all eat in there right now. We can take turns because of COVID. But again, it's just incredible, incredible work that was done all over, right before the holiday break, and then some over the holiday break. And I wanted to thank those teachers again because it was a huge undertaking. We now have one final wing that all those teachers moved out of that is to be completed in the spring. Our library is well underway, and we are still on track for that September opening. So just really excited about all the brightness and the newness that it's bringing to the whole school. I'm not sure if this is going to work. I have to see if I'm going to get out of this, but one of our E&amp;L teachers shared just this example of joyful learning. Let's see if I can do it. If I can't do it, I'm gonna, and it's posted. This is a kindergartner, if I can get it to play for you. A kindergartner, Lori Molten is our E&amp;L teacher, English as a New Language teacher for kindergarten. And these are students who are at home and learning to read at home. And I'm just going to see, I'm not sure if my sound is going to share. Let's see, audio settings. Let's see if it works. It is probably the most joyful learning, so she wrote books for them. Let's see if it works. You tell me. I see Allison Rio. Give me a thumbs up if you can hear this. No? Okay. I have to figure out where I will...
If you start the video and then you just close this window and then share that window? You just have to share that window, whatever window the video's in.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay, let me close this. And, okay, hold on. There we go. Sorry. This is worth it if I can get it there. Let's see. Now I'm under the gun. I think I may have closed out that window. Anyway, it is, I can't do it justice, but it is a little boy who, she's put his own picture in, and he's reading N-word. So I see a pan, and then it says, "I see a pan," and then his face appears, and it's on top of his head. And the giggling that he does and the engagement that he has because he is in every single page reading about a pan on his head, a can on his head, a fan on his head, it is just priceless. And again, I say this as a testament to our teachers who are finding ways to get kids engaged, laughing, joyful in their learning, and I'm so appreciative of all of them. So that's all I have for tonight. Unfortunately, it didn't work, but I'll see if I can get it out to you guys as a video so that you can have the joy too.
Fantastic, Matt. We do need the joy, so if that can be done, thank you very much. And thanks for, again, for the look inside. The photos of the new building as it's being transformed are really exciting, and I appreciate you updating us on that, and we look forward to all being able to come through there in a group one day, hopefully not too far down the road. Dr. Rio in French Road Elementary School.
Hello, everyone, and good evening again. We just have some updates from French Road, also from before break, and starting off very similar to Council Rock. We have our French Road PJ days. So again, two days of wearing PJs. Who can complain? The last week of school before break, lots of kids excited to just get into the celebration, and something still happening that you would see happening around the building with our reading and our snowman creations here that Mrs. Verdonas in fifth grade does every year. So lots of happy kids as we entered our break. And also, different ways that our communities were celebrating kindness and being thankful and gratitude. And this is an example that Mrs. Gottfried and Ms. Webster's fifth-grade students did to spread gifts of kindness, and they hung these up in the hallway, and underneath each gift is a student's name, and other students were able to write things about that student that were kind and that made them smile when they thought about them. And that was one example that I saw going on in the school, and I thought that was really a great way to share kindness with each other. We have lots of great things still happening with our curriculum that would be very typical, so we're moving right along, very similar to where we would be at this point last year. But what I really loved is, this is an example of fourth-grade hybrid learners, their personal narrative unit that finished up right before our break. And this is very typical, you know, classrooms were sharing their stories with each other, but then I had the opportunity to also pop into our remote classes, and they were at the same point and sharing their stories. And it was really, really neat to see the work that our remote learners did. I couldn't be more impressed with the writing workshop and capability to really grow and push their thinking. And these are some kids in Kathy Hutter's fourth-grade class who did a book release of their personal narratives, and they did a little preview. And I got to go in with them and listen to a little preview of their books, and then we went on seesaw, and everybody read the personal narratives, and the kids were able to give each other feedback in that way. So even though it looks a bit different than it would in the classroom, very, very powerful learning is still happening, and that happens across all grade levels, but this is just a great example of fourth grade. We have Mrs. Fallon and Mrs. Rhodes, fourth-grade classes here, engaging in some real life among us. If you have any children or know children around this age level, and I'm fortunate enough to live with some, and also, principal, many, Among Us is a very popular game with the kids right now, and they turned it into a great problem-solving activity where kids had to engage in using some of their 21st-century skills of working together and figuring out a problem to play this game in real life instead of on the computer like kids typically are playing. And I love that we have one student who is zooming in because she was not part of the class that day, but she's still part of it on the iPad. And I wanted to highlight this too because this is what school looks like right now. We often have a student carrying around another student to be part of the day and participate in the activities, and that's been going really well, and I'm so proud of our teachers for jumping in and embracing that, and our students too, for making sure that their classroom community is still up and running, even though it looks quite different. I think they're getting so used to the change in classroom community that they just kind of roll with it, and they're happy to have their classmates there with them. This is a project that I'm really proud of. Marguerite O'Pat and our counseling team led this up in school probably for several weeks in December, and it was a great way to incorporate all of our students, whether they were remote or hybrid learners, to be part of our Be the Light project. There's a great video that Eric Gruner put together. He shared on social media and on the Brighton webpage. So if anyone wants to look at that, you can check it out too. But our students, just working with their counselors in the second-step lessons that they do in the classrooms, shared all the different reasons that they were a light in someone else's life or how you could be a light. And they talked about the small acts of kindness and the big things you can do, and we have lights hanging all around the school. And here are some examples of our kids. These are some of our kids right in the building, and also some of our remote kids who created these online, and then Mrs. O'Pat printed them off and hung them up around the school too so kids could see everybody's examples. But such a special project, and our kids really enjoyed that. And it honestly is so nice to walk around for us and read these and just bring some joy to everybody. This is an example of an ongoing project that Ms. Eden has been working on with her fifth graders, but she has her own Brighton believers, and they are different individuals that are either alive or passed on, but really powerful people that she wants her kids to learn a little bit more about. So each month, she highlights a new Brighton believer, and here is Ruth Bader Ginsburg with one of her quotes, and the kids all write tweets about it and hang them up around outside the classroom. So they respond in a way that they feel, you know, whatever comes to their mind when they think about this Brighton believer. And every time you walk by her class each month, you will find a different Brighton believer, and you can read through the kids' thoughts, which are really awesome. We don't have a lot of upcoming events at French Road, unfortunately. The things that probably we would be doing right now are things like movie night and concerts, and those things are not happening. But we do have a, oh, I see a typo there. It's Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And we have a PTSA meeting coming up with the principal on January 27th. But that's all we have to look forward to coming up, but lots of things in the classroom, and kids are doing great work, so happy to be sharing that with all of you tonight.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rio, and for all those points of light and bringing that sunshine in also, again, with our kids. And like you, you know, each principal report since this pandemic learning started have always highlighted examples of children leading us, right? Kids figuring it out, carrying around a classmate on the iPad, you know? It's just, it's just fantastic and so encouraging to see, so thank you so much for that. Moving on now to 12 Corners Middle School and Principal Jim Nunes. Jim, welcome.
Thank you for having me tonight and giving me the opportunity to present. So this month, as we talked about in December, leading up to the holiday, there was a great deal of learning taking place, closing out some units. And we will first go to... Want to get this to present full screen? I can't quite... I can't quite. We'll just move on here. All right, here in Mrs. Casetto's sixth grade remote class, they had the opportunity to meet with a representative from the art gallery to bring to life some of the artifacts that they had been studying with their Egypt unit. And so the, you know, in years past, I would have assumed that they would have gone to the art gallery and seen these for themselves, but they had the opportunity to bring in a representative and curator to bring these artifacts to life for them, which was very engaging for them and they were very excited for that opportunity with them. In addition to that, in her other classes, they had the opportunity to do pen pal activities with some senior, senior community members from the Jewish home, where typically they would have an opportunity to meet with these pen pals in person. And so they did have an opportunity to zoom with them and be able to interact with them and meet them personally over Zoom, which was a very positive experience for them. And one exciting point that they did make note of is that one of the citizens were a World War Two vet. And so they were very excited to have that opportunity to meet that individual and hear some of the stories that he shared with them regarding their experiences with the war and connections they made throughout the course of their life. So they were very happy about that opportunity and to have that opportunity to engage in conversations with them. Our sixth grade students in E L A have been working on projects on identifying alliterations through their character traits. So they did a nice job of posting their work and doing so illustrating their connections to that work they have there. And here on the next one is, which was a really fun project to see take place in Mr. Montulli's class. Here, this was a research based project on the progressive movement. It was called Project Citizen and students were modern day muck breakers. And their, their focus was to take a contemporary issue and address the problem and offer a solution to that problem. And some of the topics they came up with were income inequality, use of renewable resources, LGBTQ and their rights and systemic racism. So students really did a phenomenal job of tying in those modern day issues and finding solutions with them collectively as a group and were able to assess their own work on criteria that they developed as a class. And as prior to the close of the holiday, we did recognize several of our students for students of months for both November and December. And so we recognize both students in our hybrid setting and in the remote setting. And for those students in the remote setting, I do take the opportunity to deliver it to them personally, go to their homes and take it to them so that they have that opportunity to share that moment with their families and they're all very excited to do that. And it gives me an opportunity to meet them personally as well. And so here is a full list of all of the students who are recognized in the last two months. Again, both hybrid and remotely. And so we're very excited to continue on honoring our students for the hard work that they're doing. And the student of the month certificates are all based on our Brighton believe traits. So we try to tie that to the work that they're doing in their classrooms. And they also had the opportunity, the last two days of school to have some fun with ugly sweater day and pajama day there at school. So as you can see, several of our staff members taking part in the ugly sweater day in addition to some of our students in their PJs on the day. So that was fun for them to have. And upcoming events on the 14th, we have a P T S A meeting with the principal at 12 o'clock. That topic on that day will be supporting diversity, equity and inclusion through family engagement. We will be having Dr. Marla Washington join me on that one to speak to those points. And much of the discussion will be what is the work that we've been doing as a district and how families can better support us with that work, with conversations with their children at home and taking on other community based activities to support us there. Also on the 18th, the school closing from Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. And on the 28th, we have the eighth grade parent orientation, which is done with Dr. Hall at the high school.
Fantastic. Thank you, Jim. We appreciate that. And what a great look again, the pen pal, you know, being able to make that work. What the great activities that we have had teachers and students engage in. It's just another great example of being able to make that work remote and in person. So thank you for sharing that. We appreciate that.
No, thank you.
Dr. Hall, Brighton High School.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Hope all's well. So as we started the year, we.
Weren't you supposed to be in a Bruin costume this evening?
It's coming. It's coming. I've got a special treat at the end for you.
Oh, okay.
But yes, we're very excited about the Bruins. Very excited. But we did, we started the year off actually reiterating our main four points of what we've been talking about all year with students, did that on both days for our students who come on hybrid days. And we did mention that we are officially the Bruins and we'll get more into that by the end here. One of the things our, our teen institute's a new club that started last year, pretty much it's a service club, but they, it's a national organization to get trained and they, they want to do service. It's really their big part of the culture climate leadership team too. But they took on a project, they did. They collected holiday cards. They actually, we sent this email across the district and we've got, we got cards from every building pretty much. And they sent them to 74 residents at the landing of Brighton. And they filled some bags with candy. They put names on the cards of the residents that were there and delivered those just before, I'm sorry, just after the the holiday, the Christmas break or the Christmas holiday. So they took them over there and just, it was a great time. And four young ladies really went to work just before the, the break on that. Our C C L T, this is a, just a screenshot of our C C L team group. We had a big meeting in the early December, so after our last board report, 60 plus students, parents, faculty administrators were on that Zoom. And if you can see, I know the screen's a little small. I, I don't know how to share the full screen, full size. But you can see we have every sort of club you can imagine who are a part of C C L T, all the leadership of those clubs from Asian Student Association, Best Buddies, Black Student Union, all the class councils, religious groups, Gender Sexuality Alliance, right through Women's Awareness, Muslim Student Association. All of these kids come together, a powerful group. They assemble, we look at data, surveys, and they report back to their constituent groups. Last year, they created a survey for faculty. They made signs for the bathrooms to keep them clean, to report graffiti, report issues, keeping the school safe. They wanted to make larger state school helplines in the hallways, behavior in the hallway signs, vaping signs. That was a big campaign just before we closed in March. And they also are helping to continue to frame student artwork to emphasize diversity and equity in our, and murals and they want to create murals in the hallways. They also emphasized that over the last school year that we're going to make sure that our students are aware that we can give them financial help. One of the things in the student survey that we did for the culture climate of the building, a lot of the students had no idea that we even offered financial help for students, which I was pretty surprised at. But so we decided to make that initiative and advertise that more to students. We also came up with a new incident reporting form to, to provide students another avenue besides the state schools helpline to report incidents of harassment or bullying or concerns. And that team just puts together a phenomenal plate of items that we are going to address after February and into the rest of the school year, but obviously we were closed. So these are the things that we're taking on this year and learning more about. Mental health concerns and working with the counseling department, which they've taken a lot of our feedback and have actually created some new ways of scheduling appointments fully remotely without even coming into the office. They can check a counselor's schedule and actually schedule an appointment with that counselor. We didn't have that ability until just about a few months ago. And thanks to the counselors for being open to that, the students who asked for that, it's going really well. Vaping, racial tensions, disciplinary consequences being equitable across the board and culture responsive curriculums. So we had some teachers discuss what's going on in the departments and the English and social studies departments at our last meeting. And we did a survey with our students for the greatest stressors of this fall. You know, this is a representative group of our entire student body. So what's stressing them out with the hybrid schedule, remote schedule? What's working well? What practices teachers are using that are working well for them? And what do they think of the two flexes versus one? And we are going to share that, that feedback from the students to the faculty at the end of January at our faculty meeting. And we've already reviewed that together with faculty and the C C L T. Ms. Wiggins and Mr. Hiller presented on what the English and social studies departments are doing right now in terms of their response, their culturally responsive curriculum. Lots of things happening, which I'll share with you at a future meeting. And we continue to look at the mental health challenges and we'll address those this spring. And we have our next meeting on January 20th. Fantastic group of kids that come together though. So yes, it's a great, great day to be a Bruin. We don't know what the actual bear will look like just yet. This is just one example. Mr. Mayor and I are researching some costumes. Some are better than others, but there's all sorts of great suits out there that we're going to really hand this up once we can get kids together and have contests together and celebrate. We'll probably have an interview process for the, the student who will be allowed to be in this costume. And, you know, really make it a thing to rally around. We're looking at some potential mascots that might go over by the field or even in front of the school. Take a look at that bear right there. What a Bruin. And then look at, it just gathers kids for pictures and it's fantastic. So we're looking forward to all the different things we can do that we now finally have an, an actual mascot that we can do things with, dress up and have all sorts of great fun. So with that, we have a big P T S A meeting coming up on the 20th. We'll be doing a presentation, our program planning, we'll be talking to kids about choosing courses already for the next school year. Our college career night will be fully virtual, but that will continue on the 21st. Our eighth grade parent night, that was already mentioned by Mr. Nunes. And we start our third quarter in our second semester on February 1st. So there we go. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Tom. I think first of all, on that, a fantastic, I, I think we really appreciate you sharing out the level of detail on where the culture climate leadership team is at and all the activities with that group. And that's very encouraging and very fascinating work. And I, I think that's just a tremendous addition to the Brighton High School culture, let's say. And we really appreciate how many people are actively involved in that, you know? So thanks for sharing the detail out on that. We appreciate it. And the board, the board is loath to weigh into any decisions or discussion about mascot type approach, but no live animals can be involved. Other than that, you and Nate are on your own. Thanks so much. In all seriousness, the board does want to thank Dr. McGowan for his leadership, but Dr. Hall, Nate Merritt, everyone involved in the mascot discussion. We had a huge committee put together. Anyone who wanted to participate, as Dr. McGowan has said often, was welcome, welcome to participate. It was a tremendous process. Our K 12 students were involved, alumni were involved, parents, community members. You folks that led it kept things moving along and it was a really a great process. And a true, I think, display of collaboration about the way Brighton goes about things. And just kudos, I think, for the way that that was all handled all the way through. And now, as Tom said, we actually have a mascot, so.
And I understand that, Mark, that I appreciate Kevin's approach to this. And I'm glad he didn't give the job to Nate or me to figure this all out. He took it all on himself and I, I want to say thank you for that. And now I'm just excited to, to get moving with it.
Well, I tried. You stopped answering my calls. It was like I got robbed or something.
You and me both, when we first discussed it, by the way, it was, we were clear that it was not a born issue. It was.
I, I appreciate the, the kind words from both of you. I, I will say this, yes, anybody who wanted to participate, and lots of people did. And thanks to Christina and Larry as alums too, for participating in that process and being on the committee. It was a really, really good group. We had a lot of fun voting, voting and voting and voting and voting some more. And every option is considered. So I did see after the announcement, some, you know, different people said, well, what about this? Or what about this? I can tell you, any of the what about this was considered and was voted on. Because I think that, I, I forget the number that we voted on originally, but I think it was the top 20 or so that had been submitted to the thought exchange, which had like 900 comments or something like that with all different variations. So we started with that, narrowed it down, narrowed it down, narrowed it down, and then voted on logos to go with each of them as well. And I do want to point out that we're hoping the plan right now is that by February 1st, we'll have a logo and kind of an entire branding, packaging design to get out to people with consistent lettering, consistent color. I would expect the B that has been used now for the last couple of years will be the B. I don't think that will likely change. That's a pretty consistent logo now for us. But one of the things expressed by people in the entire process was that we should stay consistent. Get it out there and that we don't need all these different variations of different colors and different fonts and it should be one thing. And we're looking forward to it being that too. That was definitely a lot of feedback that we got from people. Though the logo that was chosen by the committee, unfortunately, it had been submitted, but it was a licensed image that we would have had to purchase. And so we are looking, our graphic designers from B S N, which are athletic suppliers, have taken that and would like to, to find something, you know, as best we can in the spirit of that. But they're going to give us a lot of different options. We'll take a look at that internally and then I get something out to people. But we were very clear with the committee and in the announcement that the logo could be altered based on the needs for graphic design, licensing, that things like that. So I feel like we're true to that, but you know, unfortunately it can't be the exact one that was, was chosen at that time. There are a lot of great designs that were submitted and I think people would have been happy with many of them. So we're looking forward to getting that out to people too.
Okay.
And no bears, we promise. No bears aren't on the field. I did try and convince my family that they are really good at home and can be housebroken well. It didn't go over very big. The bulldog would have had a better chance, but not much better, I've been told, so.
Pretty sure there's a town code issue around that too, but.
Well, the Bearcat was ruled out right away apparently, so for the Bobcat or whatever that was, Bobcat.
Okay, more to come. Thank you, everybody. A couple of items of business this evening left on the, on the agenda, if we could. Could we have a motion for approval of second read on policy 5670 with regard to records management?
Second.
Julie, right, Julie?
Andrea and Larry.
Oh, Andrea made the motion, Larry made the second. You'll recall, I think, group that this policy, this is a second read came up. We had a first read and approval already. And I just, I just deleted it. Anyway, it's to update the records, oh, here it is, records management with a new policy that the New York State put into place. And I do not have any additional feedback, anything brought forward. I don't, Kim would have hit, not hit, and she would have sent it to me. So I think we're all good unless anybody has anything else to add. And then all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? That'd be non opposed, a motion carries six in favor and zero opposed. And then finally, this evening, we have our consent agenda. May we please have a motion, please, for approval of the consent agenda?
Some moved.
Second.
Moved by Sue, seconded by Christina. All in favor of the consent agenda, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the consent agenda is approved, six in favor and none opposed. Board members, anything further for the? Dr. McGowan, did you have anything that we needed to add or take care of?
No, other than just to say to people, Happy New Year, welcome back. We're very glad to be done with 2020 as I'm glad, as I'm sure that just about anybody in the world is. And looking forward to a bright, healthy and happy new year going forward. Thanks to everybody for their support.
Absolutely. We next meet then on January 19th. Stay healthy, folks. Please stay masked and please stay in small groups and we'll keep moving forward. A motion, please, to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Julie.
Whatever.
All in favor? Any opposed? That's carried, six in favor and none opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.